Starting at $12.50 a month, set that on your credit card and forget about it, or make a one-time donation of $150. And what you can do is pay it forward with our Milk for Good program. Where that happens to help us in our communities is that for every Milk for Good donation we get of $150 to Radio IQ, we'll also kick in a little bit more and have that matched by Farm Credit to provide 100 servings of fresh milk from Virginia dairy farmers to Virginia food banks. We want to thank the folks who have made that possible. That's 171,000 bowls of breakfast cereal oatmeal pancakes or mashed potatoes that we've made possible since we started this in the fall of 2020. 171,000 servings so far. But we want to keep that going. And when you make that contribution and ask for the Milk for Good and in addition to your gift, it goes to support those folks. $12.50 a month or a one-time donation of $150. And again, we are doubling the servings of milk thanks to Farm Credit matching that. 800-856-8900.
We're trying to get to 15,000 servings of that by the end of the day, right?
That's right. And we started the day at about 11,000 or 12,000 servings. So we're getting closer.
Help us reach that goal. And we talked about the match today for new donors. If you've never donated to Radio IQ before, well, your donation today is going to be tripled. Current members have overwhelmingly given to the matching gift fund to encourage all listeners to become listener contributors. Your $50 becomes 150, 100 becomes 300. The easiest place to go to do that donation is radioiq.org. You'll see the donate button up in the corner. You click that. It takes two minutes to fill out your information and you will be good to go. Smartphones, magnets, batteries, we have them because of a class of metals known as rare earth elements, but mining them can harm the environment. WUNC's Lily Burton takes us to North Carolina State University where researchers are looking for an alternative.
Rare earth elements are not so rare, but they are difficult to mine and isolate. Doing so relies on fossil fuels and creates toxic waste. But these metals make everyday technologies possible. They're also used in solar panels and wind turbines that generate cleaner, more sustainable energy.
We are actually kind of destroying the environment to make a green economy, to get these metals.
That's Colin Doherty, a scientist at NC State who's exploring ways to avoid the harsh practices of mining rare earth elements. And she's developing a literal green alternative.
And plants are actually really quite good at taking up these metals that we need.
Doherty explains that plants absorb a variety of nutrients through their roots, eventually taking them up into their stalks and leaves. In a greenhouse in West Raleigh, she works with a plant called pokeweed that can grow to be over 10 feet tall with red stalks and purple berries. It can also absorb rare earth elements. Her student, Admetez Hernandez-Pagan, explains that the lamb grows the pokeweed in acid mine drainage, which is a form of industrial waste.
And it's shown to contain a lot of like toxic metals, but also rare earth elements. And we are basically testing how pokeweed uptake the rare earth elements.
This process involves isolating rare earth elements from existing industrial waste instead of creating more waste to mine them. Doherty says this is just the kind of low carbon footprint solution she envisions. But while pokeweed is good at absorbing the rare earth elements, they still need to be extracted and isolated to be used for manufacturing. Doherty says researchers are developing methods to do that.
Right now, the current method of extraction is just to incinerate the plants and that just contributes to the CO2.
Doherty and her team are collaborating with researchers at Virginia Tech to develop alternatives to burning the plants. Other methods are being developed to get rare earths from acid mine drainage on a larger scale, but they also require extensive infrastructure. Doherty sees the pokeweed as part of a small-scale and complementary solution that could be implemented closer to sites of contamination. She says this work is a long way from providing these elements for our smartphones and solar panels, but she's optimistic.
We came into this as kind of skeptics that this is not going to happen. And the more we dig into it, the more we're like, wait, this isn't that unrealistic.
Doherty hopes that mining the rare earth elements from this industrial waste might even incentivize efforts to clean up areas the waste has polluted. For Here and Now, I'm Lily Burton.
And you're listening to Here and Now.
Hi, I'm Domenico Montanaro, senior political editor and correspondent for NPR. We're responsibly covering the presidential election means consulting many sources. We put hard questions to the campaigns, pundits, and experts. We carefully analyze polls, but most importantly, we listen to voters, seeking out varied perspectives on the issues that matter most. You can support NPR's coverage today by giving to this station. Thanks.
That's right. You can do that at radioiq.org or call 1-800-856-8900. We'll get you into the world in just a few minutes. But during the last few moments of Here and Now, we are raising money for our fall fundraiser that brings you all of the programs you listen to on Radio IQ. We're asking you to give to Radio IQ because listener support, your support, it matters. It's the largest share of our funding. Consider giving $10, $20, $30 a month, and your investment will mean more of the stories and conversations that matter to you. Give now, don't wait. Radioiq.org or call 1-800-856-8900. Hello there, I'm Radio IQ meteorologist Nick Gilmore and station manager Roger DeValle is with us this afternoon. Hello.
Hello, good afternoon. And we are just one contribution shy of getting our hour goal. That would be great. 800-856-8900. Someone who prefers to remain anonymous from Salem, our most recent contributor. Let's thank you if you'd like to be thanked on the air with your contribution soon. We've got an NPR news update headline and today's, actually BBC update of news coming up at a minute past. So you've got four minutes. You won't miss any news at all if you give a call now. 800-856-8900.
That's right. And I mentioned a little earlier today, Virginia Senator Mark Warner. He's the chairman of the Senate Intelligence Committee. And if you listen to him, he talks a lot about misinformation and they had a big panel last week talking about how there are bad actors that are trying to influence our election. And it's very important to find a good source of information, especially during an election. And we here at Radio IQ, whatever the issue might be, the economy, reproductive rights, climate change, social justice, healthcare, you can turn to us as an unbiased news source. We're just going to bring you the facts. But the simple truth of that is, it costs money to bring you the journalism and the fact-finding and to pay for the transformers and to even just bring you the message. All of that costs money. More than 60% of our operating budget comes from listeners like you. Simple truth is, we could not do it without your support. So don't wait. We're trying to get to $325,000 by Friday. You can do your part in helping with that right now. Radioiq.org or call 1-800-856-8900.
Disinformation, a huge problem. And of course, that's why you tuned in, NPR and BBC, because you're trusting that the news. Nick Ye, our director of content, was I think sharing a story about either the BBC or one of the BBC's correspondents. Nick was there and in their presence and they had come in and said, we got a breaking story on the royal family. And one of the first things that the BBC person said was, verify it. In other words, don't get it on the air immediately. There was like, get the verification. And that's one of the hallmarks that sometimes you may miss, one of those things that's behind the scenes with.
... meeting for the Board of Supervisors of September 24, 2024. I invite all whom so desire to stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, welcome to our meeting for September 24, 2024. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RVTV3, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate or to attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place them on silent. Item A, Opening Ceremonies. Number one, roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Item B, Request to postpone, add to, or change order of agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change order of agenda items, board members?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lubeck?
No changes, sir.
Thank you. Item C, Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. Number one, recognition of development services and GIS/IT department's staff on winning a 2024 Virginia Innovative Technology Symposium, known as COVITS Award, for the Citizen Connect Permits Web Application. Chair recognizes Tarek Mania, Director of Development Services. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, member of the board, on May 29, 2024, Roanoke County issued a news release to announce that Roanoke County will launch a new permitting app called Citizens Connect Permit. It is a web application to help any citizens to retrieve permit information by typing in an address, owner's name, or parcel ID in the search bar, or by clicking on a parcel on a map on our GIS system. Once a parcel is selected, the user will be able to view permit status information, various maps and imagery, and permit reports. This app was developed in-house by Roanoke County GIS staff in partnering with the Building Safety Staff of Development Services as well as Solid Syntax LLC. I am very happy to report to you that our submission to the state Virginia Innovative Technology Symposium for the Citizens Connect Permit Web Application is a winner in this year's Commonwealth Technology Awards. Roanoke County was among seven other cities and counties in the entire state of Virginia to win an award. Our award was on its kind, one of its kind. Great, great thanks go to Building Safety Staff and Building Commissioners Morgan Yates as well as all the staff on Roanoke County Development Services for job well done. The winners were formally announced during COVITS in Richmond Convention Center on Wednesday, September 11 at 12:20 PM. At the ceremony, all Roanoke County GIS staff which represented today, right behind me standing, David Ray, GIS manager, Darren Jones, GIS analyst, Kyle Nixon, GIS analyst, and Kelly Dooley, GIS citizen, as well as the director, Uma, of the IT and Assistant Director, Mariah Ward. I was going to say Mariah. During the symposium, Governor Glenn Youngkins acknowledged the many ways that Virginia is using technology to make government work better for its citizens. Lieutenant Governor Winsome Earl Sears, just prior to posing in a picture with us, reiterated the importance of using technology to make Virginia a great place to live, do business, and work, and raise families. This particular application have gained approximately 8,150 visits. In calculations, these particular visits to our webpage save one full-time positions in Roanoke County Development Services per month, and that will continue to happen every day. Any phone calls that we answer takes at least five minutes. Every visit that took place to this webpage saved us that much. In only three and a half months, 8,154 visits. Here's the award I'd like for Morgan to share with you. The big thank you goes to, of course, the GIS staff who helped us to do this. I know Mr. David Radford, very happy to hear that he's been pushing us to do that for months, but we had to do it when we're ready. And the information that we have can be shared by anyone in the world if you know where to connect. You will have up-to-date it right at your fingertips, all information you need to know about any particular applications or any particular permit we have in our system without having to talk to one person. So thanks to GIS staff as well as Development Services.
Thank you, Tarek, and staff. I got one question before I turn it over to other board members. Is Mr. Radford fluently using this system today?
I'm sorry?
Is Supervisor Radford fluently using this system?
Absolutely. Look at him. He's right there.
So I mean, he pulled it up. I mean, I can pull it up, but is he using it?
We don't have, we don't have way of detecting that, Mr. Chairman. But we maybe in the future we can.
You need to work on who's using that system then. You've already amended the new system, board members, you haven't.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So when y'all announced it, of course, I went on the website right away. This is great technology. It's like a dashboard, so I can see what occurred. So I'm going to take it a step further. I want to be able to connect it to my portal so the homeowner can just click and he can pull up and see, yeah, I told you we passed the frame inspection. And, you know, so it has pass fail. Okay, and I'll have to explain the fail, but it's a great dashboard where you can go up and down. You just type in their name and boom, it comes right up. You can, you can see their property. So it, I like it. Y'all did great. Morgan, good job. And then everybody behind you. It's just, it's great to put that kind of information at our fingertips. I use GIS for the five counties around us every day. They are so helpful. And ours is probably the most innovative of all of them. So good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the award.
I will tell y'all, and of course, David already knows this, I use GIS probably five out of seven days a week in my real estate business. And of course, just like David said, I use all the other localities too. And Roanoke County is by far the best one out there. So thank you very much. Y'all have done a great job.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, congratulations. I think it gives us a lot of community pride. We are proud of you all and the type of people that we have working in Roanoke County that you would be able to do this all in-house. And the whole idea that it's saving us staff time and money is just phenomenal. So thank you for your good work. We appreciate it. Thank you.
One more question, Mr. Chair. Sorry. Is this through City Works? Should I, using the backbone of City Works?
Yes, absolutely. That's one of the things that you did at the beginning. The first meeting that you became a board member. You voted for the City Works and that's the outcome of that.
So it's, City Works is still working fine across the spectrum now? Okay, cool.
Yes, sir.
Like it.
So is this going to be a project entered into the Virginia counties for consideration of award next year if you didn't do so this year? I leave you with that question. I certainly hope that it is because it sounds like it has potential to win a second year in a row.
Yeah, it does. Yeah.
We will take advantage of every opportunity from now on.
And then they'll come here and present you with the award from.
I can tell you, we were standing there and everybody was looking, Roanoke County? Who? Roanoke County? And, you know, it was great. It was great to be there, especially when the lieutenant governor.
Well, we need to raise the awareness in Richmond of Roanoke County because everything we do here needs to be shared with the rest of the state in many ways. And so congratulations to everyone that worked on this. This is great. I'm waiting for the next innovation. That's coming too soon one day.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Congratulations to all of you. You want to get a picture?
Yes.
Come on up here. We'll have to clean off that after all the fingerprints we put on there.
I know, we put fingerprints all over it.
Yeah.
Can we be standing?
Yeah.
You're not going to be in the picture. Can you be in the picture?
I'm going to be. My head's going to be right between yours and Morgan.
Yes.
This system ought to help y'all get fewer phone calls too, if you can get people to use it.
Yeah, I won't have to bother the second floor.
Okay, thank you all very much. Moving on to item D, First Readings of Ordinances. Number one, ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the county Roanoke for approving the refinancing of a lease transaction that originally financed various capital projects for the county and authorizing the continued leasing of certain county-owned property, the execution and delivery of a prime lease, and a local lease acquisition agreement and financing lease, and other related actions. Lori Gerhardt, Director of Finance and Management Services, for the first reading and request for the second reading. Welcome, Lori.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. Today, I present a proposed ordinance for your approval to authorize the refunding of a portion of the county's Virginia Resources Authority, or VRA, Series 2013B and 2014A Lease Revenue Bonds. The VRA reached out to the county to inform us of their upcoming fall pooled issuance and the opportunity for us to include a refunding of a portion of our 2013B and 2014A Lease Revenue Bonds. And although the market rates were low in 2013 and 14, some of those bonds were sold at a premium, and the higher premium coupon rates increased our opportunity for future refunding. And just as background, the original 2013B bonds were used to build the Venton Library and to also refund a portion of the 2004 VRA bonds, which was used to build the Public Safety Center. And the 2014A bonds were also used to refund a portion of the 2004A bonds. And this refunding opportunity has been reviewed by our municipal advisors, and they currently recommend we participate in the VRA 2024 Fall Pooled Issuance. So the ordinance before you provides the bond shall result in net debt service savings as a percentage of the principal amount of the refunded bonds of at least 3% on a present value basis. If the net present value savings would drop below 3%, then the refunding loan application can be withdrawn as late as the week of October 29. The callable bonds available for refunding total $15.385 million with varying maturities and are projected to yield a present value savings of 5.23% based on current market conditions. Staff recommends approval of the first reading of the ordinance and scheduling the second reading for October 8.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and to schedule the second reading for October the 8th, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
No, sir.
Ms. Gerhardt, I think this is a wonderful opportunity and I give a lot of credit to you and our advisors to stay on top of this so we can save some taxpayer money. This is wonderful. A question I would have is, well, two questions. If we go forward with the refunding, would that extend the term? Right now with the 2013 and 2014, I'm assuming they're 20-year bonds. Would this extend that 20-year for any period of time?
No, sir. It will not.
Okay. Second question, since they're callable, my understanding with callable bonds is we really didn't have a choice in the matter, that if whoever held them, that entity could call them at their option, not necessarily at ours. I'm assuming that being at a higher rate, nobody would want to call them because they want to keep the higher interest rate. But do we lose some control over this or is it totally in the hands of whoever the bondholder is?
And since we kind of are just a participant in the Virginia Resource Authority's pool, really, they kind of control it. I mean, obviously, we can say yes or no whether we want to participate, but they really do want us to participate if it looks like we're going to at least meet our, our policy of the 3% or more. So if you recall, last year, we tried to do this. But unfortunately, between the time we did the first reading, because I actually came to you guys for the first reading, but the market was not as good last year. And so we actually, before we could come back for the second reading, the market did not do well. And so we did pull the application. But we do not anticipate that happening under the current market conditions. And I did want to also say that, you know, we will have some advertisements in the paper which are required, and we'll have a public hearing at the next meeting ahead of the second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good report. Always nice to know that you're going to save some money. Okay, with that being said, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, thank you, Lori.
Moving on to item E, Appointments. Do any board members have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk and included in the board report for agenda item E? Number one, Community Policy Management Team, Myra McPherson to be appointed as the alternate to replace Trista Thompson for the remainder of the current term set to expire June 20, 2026. Is there a motion to approve the list of appointments set forth in the board report?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, thank you.
Item F, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Any motion to adopt all matters on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? There being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Item G, Citizens' Comments and Communications. Are there any citizens wanting to address the board that have not submitted a form? Anyone? Okay. That being said, we'll move on to item H, Reports. Is there a motion?
Is there a motion to receive and file the reports that have been included with the agenda under item H? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes, thank you. Item I, Work Session. Number one, Work Session to Review with the Board of Supervisors the Preliminary and Unaudited Financial Results for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, for the county of Roanoke, Virginia, and the FY 2526 Budget Development Process and Changes to the Comprehensive Financial Policy. Momentarily, the board will recess to the third floor for the work session. However, before doing so, I would like to move that the board go into closed session upon the completion of the work session. Item J, Closed Session Pursuant to the Code of Virginia as follows. I move that we go into the closed session pursuant to Code, Section 2.2, 3711, Subparagraph A, Part 5 of the Code of Virginia for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding facilities in the community. Specifically, the board will discuss potential business location or expansion in each of the five magisterial districts. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. The board will now recess to the third floor for the work session and closed session. Thank you.